Okay, welcome back, everybody. This is the afternoon of August 1st. Our next agenda item is a budget workshop with our clerk. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Doug.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. What I'd like to talk to the Commissioners about right now is the projected revenue for fiscal year 2023. I did send that out to the Commissioners with their packet. I'm hoping that they've had the opportunity to review. We can go line by line, or if there are any general questions that you have regarding our projections and any concerns that you have, please let me know. We did receive an email from Seth Griggs with IAC providing us with a more detailed breakdown of our sales dollars that we're going to get from the state. I'll be honest, Commissioners, I just received that the late afternoon on the 29th, and I have not had the opportunity to fully analyze that. So I will be taking a closer look at that notification that we received from Seth Griggs and maybe making some adjustments to the first three lines of the projected revenue worksheet that I've, that the Commissioners have. The first three lines are, excuse me, four lines are our liquor allocation, our, the personal property replacement, that will not change, but the sales tax inventory phase, sales tax revenue sharing, and sales tax surplus might change very slightly based on my initial review of that spreadsheet that I received from Seth, but I don't think there's going to be drastic increases being made.
So that's not a solid figure we know. It goes up throughout the year depending on sales.
You got it. So it's, we, what you see right now is just my projections of what the, of what those revenue lines are going to be for fiscal year 2023. And again, we will, once I have an opportunity to take a closer look at what Seth provided us, there might be some minor adjustments, but I don't think there's going to be anything drastic regarding the projected revenue that we get from the state.
I guess I don't have any questions, Doug, until we get down to Cascade Police. How come that went up so much from the year before?
Well, we truly still don't know, and it only went up 3%.
And from 100 and, oh, wait a minute, 140 and 21 to 194 this year. And I thought that was supposed to be around 200 and some thousand a year.
We do put a port, that, that fourth quarter payment that we get from them, we are putting into a fund to account for any capital expenditures in the upcoming years. So that's how we've handled that fourth quarter payment from the City of Cascade. It's not included, no.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It's in a fund down below that says Sheriff's Trust or something like that.
Correct. It's actually not included on this report, but it is, it's in the Sheriff's Trust is where we are receipting those dollars into. Unfortunately, though, we still don't know about the contract with the City of Cascade, if that is going to be moving forward or not. So it is possible that that amount will be zero, but unfortunately, I have not received any word if it is changing for this upcoming fiscal year, if the...
Everything was all good news when I talked to the mayor last week. He said that's to someone...
Unfortunately, nothing is permanent until there's a contract in place, and I don't know if that contract has been renewed or not. But we are, we have budgeted as we are moving forward with that contract. But that is a revenue line that you're, I appreciate you bringing up that we, we, I unfortunately don't have 100% confirmation because we, I have not seen a contract with the City of Cascade for next year. Commissioners, I don't know if you, yeah, if you want me to go down each line and let you know what the revenue is for, or if you have had an opportunity to review and ask me any questions.
I did, if you'll give me a minute.
Hey, no, please.
I had a couple of questions, but...
So you budgeted 330 for prison report, I'm taking that state inmates?
That is correct.
That was one of the questions I had.
284 last year. But we're not done with last year, are we?
We're not. We still have two more months, three more months, two more months.
And then the driver's license, no, DMVB fees that are going down, that was...
That is captured in 336, 0020, vehicle administrative fees. We have reduced that to 90,000 from 145,000.
There it is, okay.
Yep. Got it.
Okay. Does that account for that, maybe a shift in space or...
No, that, well, that costs for, accounts for the, the matters that the state has taken over regarding voter regist, voter, motor registration, motor vehicle registration.
Yeah.
I was looking at the building permits and the plan reviews. Both of those, we had substantially over those dollar figures for the last two years. So both of those departments feel that things are slowing and they're just being conservative there.
That is correct. I've met with Annette and Sinda three different times to, to talk to them about their projected revenue, and that is the figure that we all agreed upon.
What do we pay fishing wildlife? What we, that's interesting. 1,200 bucks or something like that?
It's income. It's income that we receive.
Kind of like our payment in lieu of taxes, only it's fishing in lieu of taxes or something.
Correct.
Kind of pretty small.
It's a minimal amount, but we do have to project that revenue that we receive from them.
Opioid settlement funds, that's only 30?
That is correct. It's, it's, I think a lot of people thought it was going to be a substantial amount, but...
Isn't that per year, though?
It's per year, and I don't know for how many years it is.
That's from one company.
The, so all of this snowmobile money, we just haven't gotten any of that?
We have not received, if you look at...
Marine deputy salary isn't in there as far as an actual for this year. So is that before year end?
We have not received any, let's, if you, if I can just first discuss the revenue for McCall Don Lee, a snowmobile, we still have not received any money from the state for the snowmobile program. It, it's concerning, right? We, we usually don't get that money until the end of the year. And it would be nice if that process changed a little bit, but no, we still have not received that money from the state for, for snowmobile registrations. And then your next question was...
What's wage reimbursement from elections? Because we haven't, we have 11,000 in there every year, and we haven't received anything for the last three years.
That's a journal entry that unfortunately we did not do, but we do need to be making that journal entry to pay for the operations of, we should be doing it when we have a consolidated election and when there should be...
They're paying it out of the general fund instead of taking it out of...
Correct.
And then the next one was reimbursement for facility something.
So that's for solid waste, since Scott, a portion of his role is with solid waste, we do feel that it's appropriate for a portion of his salary to be paid out of the solid waste fund.
Makes sense. So you'll do that by year end?
We will do that at the year end, yes, ma'am.
Maybe I'm skipping way ahead when I'm trying to...
We can go all the way, yeah.
Forest apportionment, that's like the forest tax.
That's our SRS dollars.
That's just SRS.
That's correct.
Do we get any money from any of the timber sales anymore?
No.
I'm lighting glass, are we?
I mean, we did in 2017 when we didn't get SRS.
That's when we got, okay.
Correct.
That money is gone forever. You know, that used to be like 6 million bucks.
I can tell you, yeah, we, we, we don't receive that.
Forest service road agreement.
So Commissioner, since we're, if you, if we're done with the general fund or if you want to go back to the general fund, I would like to touch on the road department regarding House Bill 772. I don't know if the Commissioners received any information on that or the email that was, there's additional money that we are getting from the state for House Bill 772. We did receive that money as of right now, which I don't necessarily like because I wish it was after our fiscal year is closed, but we will be receiving that money in, we will be accounting for that in remaining cash. I'll be meeting with Jeff to let him know that we should probably budget an additional $1 million worth of expenditures for fiscal year 2023 to spend that House Bill 772 money.
Is that House Bill 772, is that that, oh, what was it, 80 million or something like that that they...
It's additional sales dollars.
Some funding.
That's correct.
And something like 20% or so goes to rural, 60...
So the state's keeping 80 for road and bridge grants, basically. And then the rest of it will be disseminated to the counties? And this is the first payment? They expect that to grow, actually, to where the counties would be receiving significant...
So the, so the House bill is, is ongoing, it's not like a...
Yeah, but I have some, it, it's if the money's available, right?
Yeah, that's the thing.
It says, and we received guidance from IAC, that it's, it's intended to be ongoing. So when you hear the word intended, unfortunately, it's not guaranteed.
Right, yeah.
So if a billion foreign surplus, they best not take that away.
Well, the thing is, if you start like anchoring your road program on something like that, like, you know, it's like, hmm.
That's why I wanted to talk to the Commissioners about that. I mean, should we project for it for next fiscal year? I think probably at least this next upcoming year we do.
The JF has $2 million worth of expenditures, because he'll have a million for this year.
Well, nobody, well, it depends on when we get that funding, right? If we, I'm guessing we'll get it in July again. So, yeah, we, we could do that, we could, you could budget a portion of the remaining cash and then budget for the next House Bill 772 dollars coming in. So technically, yes, he could have $2 million additional expenditures to be made. That's one way to utilize that funding, absolutely.
And that's what I feel like we should do. We need to get money on the roads.
How does that affect that we were supposed to like roll over like 2.5 in that agreement that would kind of each year in the roads kind of roll over a safety net of like 2.5?
There will still be money to, for remaining cash.
So this really does give us an infusion for at least this coming one or maybe two years?
Yes.
To just to get some stuff done on roads?
Correct.
Not with my discussion is, you know, our road advisory board is pretty frustrated that they don't feel like anything has still been done in the last 18 months. I think Jeff really needs to get some contracts. If he can't do it, then he's got to contract it out to a third party, and I think that's kind of where we're at.
That's where we was talking about this, like grant writers and stuff like that, or, you know, just try to, just, just get something going there and take advantage of that. Yeah, I don't know what's...
And then the other, so the treasury money would probably go into PELD, it wouldn't go into Jeff's, never mind. This is Jeff's extra payment.
So the highway user allocation dollars, if you see, we projected 2,400,000. It's, what we will probably do, or what we will be doing is budgeting an additional 1 million. If you don't mind, let me go to...
And Doug, that's of 728. So for fiscal year 2022, we still have one payment coming, correct? But we actually, instead of the 2.4...
We, we don't have any more payments coming in for highway user allocation dollars.
That's, I mean, that's a million two less than we got last year. Fiscal 2021.
Yeah, but if you recall, there was that additional payment that was unexpected too last year, that, that was, it wasn't tied to anything. I think it was just, what was it, additional 800,000 or something that we received from the state? I, I can look and tell you exactly what it was called.
Yeah, that was a one-time, you're right.
That was a one-time funding. This House Bill 772 is supposed to be ongoing, and we will increase that highway user dollars roughly by a million, a million 32,000.
So you predict a...
And then we got a heavy amount of the SRS this year, higher than we have in the past, and that will be ongoing for two years, so we can at least count on that for the next two years. So really, Jeff's revenue income's going to be 6 million.
Correct.
For the next, at least...
At least two years. At, at least two years. Unless the next matter on the agenda is if the Commissioners want to change, increase the amount that we give to Title II, but we'll talk about that during the next agenda.
Doug, can you remind me on the Forest Service road agreement? Where, where's that revenue coming in?
So that is any projects that we will be doing for the Forest Service? The, the one that we are projecting 800,000 is no business?
And we're expected to get a grant, so that's if we get the grant, we spend the money?
No, we're, we're in agreement with the, the Forest Service. It's not a grant, it, it's we are doing the work, and then we are getting compensated for that.
That's one of those that we could contract out?
Yes.
That's a RAC grant, I think, that was approved last time.
I think the issue honestly with the road department is he just doesn't have enough help. Yet, with all with 12 guys or 11 or 13 or whatever he's got now.
And I agree with that, but I think it, you know, we've just talked about doing, like the backcountry stuff. That really should be subbed out and let whoever's back there do it and keep Jeff and the guys on the valley floor.
I know he's been working with Wade on that for next year, but this year Wade was already booked, he couldn't do it this year. That's the plan for next year. And it's pretty much going to take all the gas tax to do it.
Commissioners, I, I apologize, I don't recall. Did Jeff have a, a priority list or a project list for this year? And do, do you know, or do we know if those projects have been completed?
Remember, they're supposed to grind Johnson and all those roads up there and repaint them all, and he's waiting for the...
Couple of roads that are paving.
We're waiting on the core samples, we should have that this week, and then those three roads are supposed to be grounded.
I think we're looking like September and October on those two major...
But the other priorities are not completed, I don't believe. I can give you his priority list real quick.
I know my road's never been graded, not once. There's some more roads down there in the valley that don't even get looked at.
I think there's...
Right now, the contract can, would be a major, major issue right now, a major focus on it. What do you think? Got to get these jobs done.
Gosh, I can't believe we took in 850,000 on gate fee. Or no, we've actually taken a million on gate fees. That's how, how much our trash is going.
That's correct. And that's, you know, we still have August and September.
Two more months, it's going to be.
But if you recall too, Commissioners, you did increase some of the cost for what is, the, we did increase the gate fee costs as well, so that's accounted for.
When that studied Great West is coming back, is that going to come in in time for budget?
Yeah, we have that scheduled. I'll have to check, but I think it's next week.
Okay. That's going to give us some great information, I think.
Knob Hill was supposed to be done, Wild Goose is supposed to be done. Pearson is contracted. Heinrich is scheduled.
Okay, now let's go back, Doug, and talk about the Title II. You want to do that?
No, let's, let's wait. That's a separate agenda matter.
So what's next?
Uh, next is the L2, yes. So I wanted to let the Commissioners know the maximum amount that we can levy for. So you've been provided with the 2022 L2 worksheet, which shows that the maximum amount that Valley County can levy for is 9,77,805. We have our 3% of 262,42, and then our new construction. Then you have to minus our personal property replacement. So the, the maximum amount that Valley County can levy for is 9,77,805. Right now, we were...
Mine doesn't say that, Doug, and I don't know if I got the right one, it's 8,936.
No, that's what we have budgeted so far.
So then the levy rate is .00876?
Do you mind printing me off that?
Is that, what am I talking about now? Is that a, is that a different attachment?
Hold on one second, and I will... You want, you guys want a copy of the bug? I do too, I've got the L2.
L2. Thanks, Doug.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sorry.
Doug, I know you told me this this morning, but you remember what our levy rate was last year?
Yeah, .0013, with a few other numbers behind that.
13, so we moved, geez, a lot. Down a lot. Does that include EMS and all that, or just the county?
This is just the county.
Okay.
This is what the...
Wow.
So Commissioners, as you can see, we do have, we, we have, what we have budgeted for and proposing to levy right now is definitely under our 3% and under our new construction. There are some additional requests that I am just recently been made aware of on Thursday that are probably going to be added to the budget, roughly 25,000. So not, yeah, and then if, Commissioners, if you were aware, HR was actually recommending for a 5% wage increase. What is budgeted for what you see as a 3%? If we went for a 4%, that would be an additional 92,785. That would be added to the budget. Based on my initial calculations, we still would have some wiggle room of 29,811.50 if there's any unexpected requests that come in. We're allowing budget requests to be made up until the 11th, but I don't, we have to publish our budget on the 15th. But realistically, we're going to be having one more budget workshop with the Commissioners on the 8th. So I don't want to modify too much, but we did let one department know that the 11th is really the drop dead deadline before we publish.
So Doug, so first of all, what's 25,000? I mean, late requests, are they capital expenditures, are they...
It's a request to move the prosecuting attorney's office down to the Title Building, and that's going to be estimated cost for IT equipment, IT, IT servers and wire pulling, and that, that's IT cost.
So the fact that we have two offices up here now are not going to meet their needs?
Uh, not, I, they'll need to discuss that with the, the Commissioners, but it was brought to my attention...
So they're not going to move up to the, the old dispatch?
IT is.
IT is. So IT's office is available.
And then you said the day that all the file cabinets have been...
All the fire, files are gone, the filing cabinets are still in there, I understand. But, yeah, we should have that discussion.
What's the rent?
I think that's being negotiated, but we budgeted, the Commissioners allowed $30,000 to be budgeted in the prosecuting attorney's budget for that.
The 3% increase that you've got, does that include the medical insurance bump?
Yes, that's 9.5% increase.
But how much of that was, how do I say this, was part of the salary increase? You know, was it a 1 or 2%?
So, no, so that we didn't, that is just the cost, additional cost for the county. Let me rephrase that. We budgeted an additional 9.5% increase to the cost of what the county pays. So when the budget that you have, the budget worksheets you have for medical expenses in 0118 includes the 9.5% increase.
But it used to be that if we got a big bump like that, that was part of the salary increase, was that we paid that increase in their premium?
No, not to my knowledge.
Yeah.
So Doug, remind me again about how many, how many new positions? So this includes Annette's?
Yes.
The two deputies for recreation?
Correct.
A 4H?
Correct.
That a half?
That's a part-time.
Does it give facilities a part-time?
What about the two appraisers?
Yeah. All those are in there, even though we haven't filled the other three yet.
It gives, we did not budget an additional position for buildings and grounds because we are under the assumption that there's going to be a retirement.
So the reason that I'm asking that question is somebody needs to take care of those fairgrounds. And right now, we don't have anybody to do that within house, within the county at all, and...
Yeah, and I don't think it's secure, it's only because they, they just didn't know they were supposed to do that. And I think we've kind of changed that, hopefully that he'll start doing that, but...
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about who gets the contracts? Who makes sure the insurance is in place? You know, who's scheduling that calendar? Who's making sure the weeds are taken care of, you know? Who's taking, make sure the bathrooms are, you know, up to date or, you know, that the fairground is ready and not just for fair and rodeo, but for any other event? Because we don't have that right now, anywhere.
Well, that could be part of this new person that comes in and takes over, I guess, after we have that retirement. Doug, do you have like a list of the positions that you guys did?
I'm trying to find it right now, and I can't. I can't get out of where I'm at, so I must not...
Hello, Jeffrey? How you doing?
Hang in there. We're on tape, don't be honest.
Don't be honest.
I can't get back to where any of our stuff is.
So the new positions are 4H program assistant, that's been budgeted for?
That's a half.
That's a, that's correct, a half-time position, a building tech?
A building department?
That's correct.
Is that full?
That's a full-time, yep.
Okay.
We have one appraiser. We have one cadastral specialist. And then part-time revale has been budgeted.
Part-time, part-time what?
Revale, and the... Is the cadastral underneath a revale, Doug?
Yes.
That actually satisfies some of that state request?
Right.
We have two patrol deputies, which would be technically, I think, the recreation deputies.
Those would be waterways?
That would not be waterways, this would be recreation. The jail tech?
Jail tech, is that the medical one?
We have a retirement, and then detention deputy, and then a part-time security.
So nothing on the medical at the jail?
We have budgeted $80,000 for the contract work. $80,000 was put in their budget for, to contract that medical out.
And that's just a continuation of what we've been doing, right?
No, that would be an enhanced of what we're doing.
What did we do last year, do you remember?
We didn't do anything.
We didn't have a-
We just paid as we, as they did, came in and did-
Well, we, we, there's a requirement that they have a checkup, like for, if they're in with us for longer than fourteen days. But this would allow medical professionals to come into the jail and provide specialized services. Unfortunately, if an individual's detoxing from alcohol, they could come in and treat this individual so we don't have to send them to the hospital and then potentially send them to Boise for IT.
So this isn't a so many hours a year contract, it's just-
If you recall, Commissioner Chairman, I think it was four days a week, five days a week?
Oh, that's almost a full contract.
So these are my concerns. Are we addressing where the need really is? Four-H, I fully support a half position. I really think Scott needs an additional half person. So I'm questioning, I mean, the building. I, I know that Annette needs some help over there. Is it one position, is it a half position? I know she's sensitive, and she's had to wait for a couple of years, so I think that that's appropriate. The recreation absolutely meets our strategic plan. Those recreation patrols have been identified as top priority out of the strategic planning committee. The jail tech, is that an extension, and how many positions do they have open right now? They have like five of them open right now?
So the jail tech, no, that, that's a-
That's a retiring.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the admin over there. Detention deputy-
That would be a-
So an expansion of what he's currently got. And part-time security, is that to help out at the front?
Correct, to cover vacations and when they're in court.
So the appraiser. I wanna meet with June, and I'll do that before our next meeting. But, I mean, the state is requiring two in revale, correct?
I believe that's what was presented to the commissioners.
I think there's a formula based on number of parcels determines how many appraisers you're supposed to have.
There is, but we can't get them full, and we currently have three open right now, we can't fill them.
We just got a new one last week.
I'll sit down with June this week and go over those. I really think we need a half position for Scott. Over and above that retirement, because somebody's gotta take care of that fairgrounds. We don't have it right now, and I think he's got so much on his plate right now, I don't even know how he functions. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight and a half positions, and really, it's nine and a half positions. Oh, good, Jen's here, because of that medical, I mean, the medical technician, eighty thousand dollars a year to have somebody come in.
So don't we get reimbursed from the state on the state inmates, though?
Well, no, I mean, we get reimbursed for their stay, and then if there are costs that are associated with medical when they go to the hospital-
Then we get reimbursed.
Correct.
You gotta go to the hospital first.
So this is my concern, I'll just put it out there. Jeff is getting more money in the road department this year. Jeff, you got a good bump because of that extra state check. We need to show the community how we are going to improve our roads. We had budgeted for Jeff last year seven hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars, we're giving him zero this year and taking all of those funds and putting into these new positions as we move forward. So are we being fiscally responsible in not putting anything into roads, funding all of these new positions? And then, you know, if, if the ongoing funding is not there for the road department, we're gonna have to go back out and levy for roads. Yet we have added to all of the other positions in the county, and I'm just concerned of that, that's my-
Wish I could be more help to you on that, but the thing is, is it seems like it takes a little bit of longevity to understand this budget thing.
Yeah, the budgeting is horrible.
One of the things, I mean, right off, we've got a couple of million dollars more for the next couple of years, it sounds like, in roads. I know Jeff probably needs positions, you know, so it seems like-
Or he needs to be able to-
I don't know if he's, or to get something, in other words, whatever, what it takes.
Contract it out.
You know, and I, so when they're considering that, at least we've got money in that particular deal to start looking at, it seems like.
Well, we have to budget for it now.
I know. Jeff, how many are you down? Normal, five?
Basically one, but you gotta remember we hired two people to work for the winter time, and then they leave in the summertime.
Yeah. Right. So, has Pat been going out, has there been any takers, or anybody?
Tell me that, two really good road techs that applied last week, so hopefully-
Did, did you put new positions or anything in your budget request? It's kinda-
My, my number of people is based on my snow removal routes. I need seventeen people, if I hire nineteen people, what am I gonna do with the other two in the winter time?
Fix, right, right contracts, right contracts. Fix stuff, it needs to be fixed.
Have them clean up the snowmobile or the routes that-
Anyway, that just seems more like one area that I, I don't know, and you make a good point on the, on the, on the facilities as well. I mean, that, if it's, if it's a job, it just, gosh.
Well, the thing is, is that if you really want to get the road department off those facilities down there and do anything with those fairgrounds, somebody's gonna have to make that a priority.
Yeah.
And so it's like, you know, what, how do we do that, how do we look at that? And is this budget a reflection of our priorities for the county? Are we putting in the right spots?
I, I would say that based on the meetings that we've had with the elected officials and department heads, it is. But that, that's, again-
I'm just thinking of the strategic plan and where some of these things were ranked, and-
So Doug, you might know the answer to this, if we go out for two patrol deputies for recreation, they're gonna be used for other things.
I, I don't know, I think the-
I mean, these guys aren't just gonna sit around and work on the weekends.
No, I, I think they would be dedicated for recreation. I don't know exactly how it was gonna look, I apologize, I wasn't really involved with the strategic planning of that.
So, no, their plan to be out in the forest, out in, you know, Valley County, all enforcing, not just on the weekends.
But I understand the sheriff that that's gonna be a rotation, it's not gonna be the same two guys.
I think it would be a rotation, but don't quote me on that, I don't know how the command staff have discussed how they would be rotated or utilized.
We're also talking about two more trucks, fully outfitted and all that stuff, too.
And additional equipment, potentially, snowmobiles and-
TDs, radios, all that.
So all of that could be Title III.
Could be.
So, that's what we were talking about, when I talked to these guys last, if these guys are out-
Do I pay salary with Title III?
I don't pay salary, but you can buy all their equipment.
All their equipment, okay. June, anything you wanna add? Yeah, yeah, come on up. It's everybody's decision.
They said I'll come meet with you.
Well, I got the information together on the appraisers. This is in sixty-three, three, one, four, that the commissioners, the county will support revale department because the revale department brings in the value which keeps the county operating. Right now, I'm down appraisers, yeah, we are having problem getting it filled. The ones that are out in the field right now are busting their backsides. They are doing two jobs, two people's jobs. I'm getting concerned about burnout. If anybody gets sick or hurt, I have one out right now that had surgery. It throws us so far behind, we have got to get some help. That's not anybody's problem or fault, I mean, it's just overall in the county. But if we don't budget for these positions that the state tax commission mandated that we budget for, they will come up, or they could come up and take over our revale. And we would lose money.
So a question for that, I don't, I don't honestly understand, I know that you've got two divisions, revale and appraisal. Is that where all of the appraisers are under revale?
Yes, my, my mapper, my cartographer is under revale. We are going, hopefully going to move our mapper trainee into revale. Sue Lieber and myself are both under revale at a percentage, Sue is doing a hundred plus percent of revale. We're not even reflecting that in our, in our five-year plan. We've, I think we projected her at like fifty percent, that's gonna change. She isn't going to even be able to do as much as I do in revale when she takes my position. We have Noreen. We have Christie, we have Justine, and we have Jen. We are down a statistician, that's something that we'll discuss later because we may have something in the works on that to replace that. But these appraisers cannot keep doing all of this. We, we will get our five-year revale done. If we don't get it done, like I said, the state will come up. If we don't have those positions open and available that are required in my five-year plan, the state may come up and take over some of this.
I agree with all that, go back to Kathy going into the-
That will, that will help our revale number, body numbers come up. If I put Kathy into cartography, that's a body, that's an additional body. So we have one appraiser opening, two appraiser openings, excuse me, we haven't replaced Nicole. We still have the vacancy that we haven't been able to fill that was approved last year. And we have requested a third one per the state because I sent my plan in without that additional position. It was returned to me by George Brown, and he said, you need to fix this. And I have copies of all of those emails, I added an additional position, and they approved my plan. I have no choice in it, we've gotta try and get a body. And I wanna keep the appraisers from burning out, we are going-
I agree with that a hundred percent, we need to support our existing help, it's just, and the only problem I have is just timing. It's so difficult to find help right now, so we're asking the taxpayers to fill positions that have been unfilled now for quite some time.
But we have got to keep those available, so if we can get a person to come in, we can hire them and bring them on.
And Kathy, you're going into the cadastral position, is it more of a training position, or is it truly a need right now?
Oh, it's a need, Lori is, with all the new subdivisions and the splits and combinations. She, the only reason she's been able to do it as long as she has, she's been doing it probably about twelve years or longer. She knows what she's doing, Lori can do the work of two people. But again, we're getting burnout, and if she gets sick, right now, she's out. So, that's where we're at. Any other questions for me, as far as revale goes, or?
No, I think that, that's all very appropriate. Do we have a, do we have a rollover savings for those positions that we haven't filled? Cash carryover.
Yes, it stays in the revale budget, the revale budget has its own levy. It is not out of the, well, it's general, but it's not out of the general fund, if, if, if I'm not speaking correctly, Clerk Miller. It does have its own levy.
Okay.
So all benefits and everything are paid out of the revale.
So from a financial standpoint, there's probably no problem in filling those positions, then, if you've got that, you know, you keep-
Correct, I have- It has to be under our three percent cap, though. So, e- even though it's a separate levy, we still can only do three percent plus new construction for everything. So it's a separate line item, but it still all comes down to the bottom line at the end.
Anything else?
Sure, I'm thinking on the-
Okay.
The help for buildings and grounds, let's see, after that employee retires. We can't find somebody to do that, and then add some more to that job description where they are in charge of the fairgrounds. And until we get something, a newer facility there that's gonna get used a lot more, I don't think there's that much work, honestly.
Well, honestly, it depends on if we're doing the work or we're contracting it out, because some of those buildings down there got to be repainted, they're a mess right now.
When we did that the first time years ago, it was the four-H club's painting.
I know, but that's not-
It doesn't work anymore, does it?
Not reality now, so, I mean-
So what we're doing is looking forward to a retirement in, you know, of Scott maybe. Where you'll have one position plus Scott. So, does that still, if you get a good person to get, fill that, do you still need that high person you're talking about for the fairgrounds?
I don't know, Mitch has got, or one of the other employees in that department has got to have shoulder surgery. So, we're gonna have, you know-
I get a feeling that that is a weakness there, that you got to, you got the number of people, you know, you just, we just don't have it.
Well, it's how much, how much are we gonna do in-house, or allow right now, third parties to come in and, and do it?
Well, I think we've been really good with that, like the light cab building, that's all been third-party.
Yeah, exactly.
And that gives, you know, that's a lot of work for Scott, I understand that, but-
They're not physically doing the work, and I think that's does, is something we need to think about.
You know, or the, nursing's gonna come in and fix the wall, that was all contracted out, I think there's a lot of contract work that he has to deal with.
Doug, is there enough, I'm sorry?
I, I'm just trying to get, wrap my mind around two, you know, we got, if you got a manager there that can manage all these pieces, it just seems like trying to hire people to do it is not, I don't know. It may, the contractual route seems like it, if you can get them, of course, but it's the same thing with getting employees.
I mean, that building could definitely be painted, but does, does Scott have in his budget these projects? Doug, does he have enough in his budget?
We have budgeted twenty thousand dollars specifically for the fairground.
As much as that as you can do off the street with contracts, seem like make, facilities makes a lot more sense than trying to have another permanent employee with benefits and all of that, and the uncertainty of those. And, and usually get the job done pretty quick. Yeah. An outside contractor. Yeah, even, even in our day's times, it at least seemed like we'd get somebody responding, yeah, well, yeah. But, you know-
So let's work on that job description, because I like that, you know, I mean, that person specifically taking care of that department down there. But somebody needs to have that under their purview to be looking at and, and coordinating the painting and coordinating a work schedule specifically.
Manager. And I think Scott cleaning is very good at doing that. My concern is, you know, this winter's, the other Scott, mows the sidewalks, mows the lawns, does that kind of stuff, and- Maybe a small contract. Well, and we don't know what's gonna happen with that yet. How do you do on the building cleaning, don't you just have a contract doing that? It's all janitorial contracts. So why wouldn't you add the other outside stuff to that? You know? Well, you could hire a health and nursery to mow the lawns if you wanted to, but I tell you, it's gonna be a lot more than what we're paying employees to do, and it's really not that much lawn. No, but if you look at it over the full spectrum of the year, when you get benefits, you get all the stuff. You know, maybe that double cost for that four pounds a year mowing, then starts looking a little better.
And then I would like to put out there also a five, so we're gonna be really close to our budget max this year. But I would like to put something in that we start, anything extra up to the three percent and the new construction starts going into a capital improvement fund, a C budget. And whether that is specifically to Jeff and the road department, you know, have him create a C budget for capital expenditures. Or whether it's a general fund, I don't know if we can do that, Doug, in the general fund for capital. But not put things into foregone, because we know that that's not a good tool to use moving forward. So if we have twenty-five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars left over, let's put it into a C budget specifically to start planning for the future.
Well, you can put it into general fund reserve. And that's unspecified money, can go anywhere you need it, we always considered that as our emergency-
that as our emergency money if we had a West Nile virus, or if we had a road washout or something.
But you can't, I, can you budget in the general fund, just a, an extra?
You can do capital improvements, I guess, in a general fund.
I think we need to.
You're talking about a cumulative pot of money to, to hit these projects as they come up.
Yes.
Well, until it makes a lot of sense to have that, to be there as soon as it happens, you say, yes, just get this done. We have the money to pay for it.
Yes. And our levy this year is, I mean, it's gone way down, which is really helpful to everyone. I understand property values have gone way up. And we want to balance it. We're right there at that three percent, but I just think that we need a plan moving forward that is fiscally responsible. Take what's available to us. I, I guess my comment would be that if we don't, if we don't take the money each year and put it into foregone, then we have to go back and ask for a road levy in two or three years. And to me, that, that doesn't make sense to have money in foregone that we can't get to now, and then go out and ask for a levy for something.
Well, if you take the full three percent, there'll be no foregone.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and we're going for the full three percent. Like, my, my thing that's going on in my head is should we do a four percent raise instead of a three percent raise?
I think we should. I think we should take care of the employees as much as we can.
Pretty obvious we're not, we can't retain employees long enough.
We're not keeping up, and Doug, I don't, I didn't get that same figure. I think if we take the the raise and the twenty-five thousand that's being asked for.
I, I didn't, I didn't budget for the twenty-five thousand, Commissioner Moplin, just yet, but if we took the twenty-five thousand, we would be down to like four thousand dollars.
That's what I got, too.
Yep.
Yeah.
Then we're running ours tight as we can run it. You did put three hundred thousand general fund reserve, right?
We did. We budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three hundred and fifty, okay.
General fund reserve.
I think we're great. I think we should take the four percent.
I do, too. I think it's important. We take care of our.
And what we'll do, commissioners, is prior to the next budget workshop, we will add that so the commissioners can see what a four percent increase. Uh, we'll try to discuss further with IT about the potential move. And we'll have a pretty solid budget prepared for the commissioners to review next Monday during the budget workshop. And then we'll be ready to publish on the fifteenth. Uh, and it will run for two weeks, and then our budget hearing will be on August twenty-ninth.
One last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so the sheriff's capital equipment fund, that hundred eighty-one thousand. We're buying quite a few vehicles for the sheriff's department. Why can't we buy a couple of them out of that? I mean, that is.
I would like the commissioners to have that discussion with the sheriff.
We ask her to come in next week.
Absolutely.
I mean, that is set aside for, you know, costs for Cascade. There's never, there has been nothing come out of that. It's called the sheriff's capital equipment fund.
Oh, yeah.
And I'd like to know what that, what that's for, not equipment. Why can't we buy a couple of vehicles out of that?
Well, like our next agenda item is for a truck for waterways. We could use waterways funds for that, can't we?
Same kind of thing.
Well, you can, but this was.
Different, okay. Well, let's, let's move on to that. I think we do need to have a discussion, too, if, about the prosecutor moving down to the title company. Because all of a sudden, we're gonna have some empty rooms. And I don't know if that makes a lot of sense right now, but we'll see what they come up with. So our next agenda item is an action item. This is a discussion decision regarding purchase of an available Dodge three-quarter ton diesel truck for waterways.
So I went into Cascade Auto Thursday afternoon to see, get an update on our road department, two pickups, waterways pickup. No go. Don't even know when they're gonna get built, including my two. So I asked her what she had on the lot. She pointed me out there to a couple of them. Found a three-quarter ton, which will be doable. I talked to Stan Boll and Kevin Turner over at Sheriff's Office Thursday afternoon, got everything cleared. Three-quarter ton, it's pretty plain Jane, but it's got the stuff in it that we require as a county vehicle. Bluetooth, heated mirrors, stuff like that, that we can run it year-round. Uh, we got okayed. So the last pickup I ordered for him last December was fifty-five thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. We got that budgeted for this year, twenty-two. Pickup, the pickup sitting on the lot that we can buy right now is six thousand, sixty-one thousand, six forty-two.
Do they have any with gas motors, Jeff? In carton gas motors?
We're after a diesel for waterways, because they pull those big jet boats to Lewiston for services.
I didn't know they took a.
And gasoline.
Yeah.
It'll do it, but the diesel's gonna have a little more power, a little long, more longevity. They got that engine braking thing in them for coming down hills with big loads. There's not that much difference between, I mean, you're looking at six thousand dollars difference between a gas and a diesel.
And you're asking us to approve through this the difference of the sixty-one twenty-seven?
Yes. Yep, Kevin said he shouldn't have a problem getting that through the waterways committee. Is there other pickup that they're replacing is getting old and tired?
What's the plan for it?
I think it's gonna come to us. I'm not, I didn't quite get that out of him, but it's a, it's a gas-motored one.
Out of the recreation.
What, what they're gonna do, I think they're gonna take Kevin's pickup. Oh, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what they're doing.
Is that the white Dodge? It usually sits down the end of the.
That's Kevin's pickup, yeah. That, that's a gas motor.
So they've been, they've been dragging those boats up there with the gas motor?
Yeah, and that's it can be done.
I knew, you know, you're talking about, what, once a year for something like that?
Twice a year.
Yeah.
And there's, I think they've got three boats, so there are six trips.
Wait, can I ask, why do they take it to Lewiston, not down below?
Yeah, I don't.
You're asking the wrong department. I have nothing to do with their boats.
I think the biggest thing is the availability. I mean, right now, the diesel is the one that's available. It's, in my opinion, oh, that's, right now, we've gotta take availability.
They have three of them on the lot.
I don't know if anything will change, but it sure costs a lot more to drive them nowadays.
They go sixty-one. They cost more, but
Yeah.
Th- this diesel gets four more miles to the gallon better than a gasoline does.
Yeah.
So should we be looking at the other ones on the lot for some of the other things you're not getting?
Not for me.
No?
No. I'm just after, there's nothing special about the pickups I ordered.
Yeah.
She told me the reason waterways didn't get them, because we ordered a one-ton four-door with a six-and-a-half-foot bed. I wasn't told that that was a special order at the time I ordered it. And they're not gonna make that until they make more than one. She can get me one-ton four-doors with an eight-foot bed any day of the week.
Well, I, I, here's another question. Jeff, I mean, if, if we're buying a piece of equipment like that, just kinda, what other use does it get? Are you talking about dragging the boats? If they're what, I mean, sometimes I think if we're, if we're putting a lot of money into something because of a, well, we gotta move this thing a couple of times a year. Shouldn't we be maybe hiring somebody to tow those darn things? I mean.
Well, then, then you're talking about a non-county employee moving a county-owned vehicle. It's a no-go.
Contractors, contractors.
No-go if the prosecuting attorney, it's just like me grabbing, she'll blow off the street and put them in one of my snowplows in the wintertime. Can't do it.
That's the only time that they move this boat?
No, well, they're constantly moving them around the county.
That's not the only.
Yeah, that, that's just their long trips. They're constantly pulling them out of the pit lane to bring them down to Cascade, Cascade to McCall. Longevity and what's available right now, because we're.
Big thing is what's.
Kevin should be hearing that discussion, I suppose, too, you know, but, you know.
We're eight, we're eight months into waiting on this pickup, and there's no end in sight for getting one.
Have you priced any down at Mountain Home Auto where we bought all those?
Nothing down there that we're after.
Yeah, nothing, man.
Yeah.
But we're pretty well loaded up on Durango's now.
Not hung up on the.
Yeah, the Durango's are good. They're.
I mean, you know.
They haven't even finished the first one down there yet, so don't know when we're gonna get those back from the upfitter.
No, I don't.
I would move that we approve the increase in the cost of the purchase, the available Dodge three-quarter ton diesel for the waterways department.
I'll second that.
Do you second it? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, move as carries.
Get her done.
That comes out of their budget anyway, so.
Yes. This, it, it's also longevity. They don't put a lot of miles on it.
Right.
But they'll get about fifteen years out of it.
Yeah, that is a good point.
That's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, anything else you wanna talk about, Jeff? Anything else we need to be notified about?
I'm sure you heard what happened last week.
Not really.
But it doesn't need to be talked about.
No, not.
Jeff, did you, did you know that fishing game's gonna, we talked last time, I think we were together, about Stonebreaker Lane? The fishing game leased a lot in there for this year.
I've, I've been talking to the fishing game, Jordan.
Yeah, Jordan.
Jordan somebody.
Jordan Messner.
Yes, that's his name.
Oh, yeah, I didn't know if you knew, but he's got that leased, I guess.
Yep.
Not a percent. You know who's gonna plow the road, Ed?
I've, I've already told Jordan we can't help them, because I don't have any equipment anywhere near that place.
Yeah, that is a bad place to get to, isn't it?
Yeah.
You can work with the state.
Yeah, work with the state, or, you know, there's local contractors around. Like Ed was saying, you know, some of this stuff, like I'm doing this year, I'm contracting out. My borings are done.
We've gotten any word back?
Waiting for results. Uh, been in contact with Valley Paving on all this stuff, and they're getting a little antsy, because they have to leave their oil. They've gotta get their subcontractors in place. So we'll, I think once it goes, it's gonna go pretty quick.
Oh, so, uh, who, who's got the contractor, Clearwater or?
Valley Paving.
Valley Paving.
Yeah.
Which roads are they doing again?
Oh, jeez.
Sorry.
Pearson, Johnson, Heinrich, and Cobarton. Yep.
So Jeff, I didn't see the li, I didn't really read that last from Megan or whoever it was, but, uh, when do we have to have that one contract finished up, that review? Or?
Oh, um, sounds like we're trying, she's been emailing you back and forth.
The bridge thing?
We've decided on the eleventh. Or something like that. We were gonna, we're trying to.
Pick the engineer?
This is for the pick and engineer for the East Side Drive Bridge.
Next, next Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That helps for my.
Yeah, you might wanna, she, you probably got an email on there from her.
Yeah, she just wanted to make sure I could do the, but I don't know right now of any conflict.
I emailed her back and told you you're running commissioners today, so it might be later today by the time you got back to her. That'll be good to sit down with them to kinda go over the details on what they're gonna be after, rather than me trying to explain it to you.
I may spend, I may come and visit with you for an hour or so sometime, because I, to kinda make sure of getting.
You can talk to El. He started one.
He did one.
It's, uh, not as easy as it looks.
He's willing to be the greatest road to finish it.
So, so basically.
I put a plug in for you.
To give you an idea how detail-oriented it is, I cannot do it at work. I take it home with me, because I can do it undisturbed. I have to, gotta read it, look at the scoring, read it again, look at the scoring. Then maybe you're ready to score on that paragraph.
Yeah, or just show up with an opinion, huh?
You have to, you gotta dedicate your brain to this thing.
That'd be good.
I can see we're in trouble on that one.
Other than that, uh, we started Spring Valley today in Wagon Wheel.
Yes.
We've been doing, we got Wisdom, West Valley, got a bunch of paving patches done on that thing. Uh, Farm to Market, we fixed that hole on Farm to Market last week with the paver. We've had the paver out for the last two weeks, just kind of all over the place, instead of doing paver patches.
Working pretty smoothly.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, how's the backcountry roads?
Uh, I got my crew back there. They got about two weeks left in the Bear Valley area. And they'll head for Yellow Pine, then from there, they'll head up over into Big Creek. North End, I haven't quite got that one figured out yet, because I don't have enough crew right now.
You're talking Lick Creek?
Huh?
What are you talking, Lick Creek? What do you mean, North End?
Uh, Elk Summit.
Oh.
Edwards, or, uh, Ash Warren. And here, next couple of weeks, I'll be making that long loop soon.
It's a long drive.
Takes about twelve hours, ten to twelve hours. It's a ten mile an hour road for about thirty-five miles, so it's one you just don't wanna go fast on, otherwise you end up with a side-by-side in your grill.
So we put an extra two million in your budget for next year?
Million? I thought we had one point two.
And get another one point two in next year's budget. You got one point two in this year's, which you need to expend.
Oh, in this year's.
And then you got another one point two next year.
We gotta open the budget back up.
No, 'cause you're not gonna expend that money. Well, I mean, if the commissioners are inclined for you to spend that money that we received this year, then yes.
Right now, I probably can't, and I probably can't find contractors to do it, so.
But keep that in mind for next year.
Commissioners, we're meeting, I'm meeting with Jeff on the third.
That just means less that we gotta dig into my cash forward. Or we do more.
I just need to find you some more help, Jeff. Just keep pushing pad on that, I guess.
You keep thinking about that, you know, what would you do with two extra guys? I mean.
I mean, two extra guys, I can do it, but then I need two more pieces of, I need another eight hundred thousand dollars in equipment to run those two people in the wintertime.
Uh, kinda.
I'm in the summertime, too. I mean, it's got the money available right now, so.
Getting them into the club, so to speak, in the wintertime. They may not do a lot, but you'll need them in the summer.
Well, I can use them year-round.
Yeah. Even if they can't plow snow there, I'm sure you can find something for them to do.
Well, there's always something to do.
Well, I guess the point is, if you got equipment sitting over there idling, nobody'd put in the seats.
Summertime I do. It's wintertime I don't.
Well, in the wintertime, though, last winter, how much did you plow snow?
Enough for me.
So there was a piece of equipment for you to get into?
We had two months.
Never be in piece of equipment.
Basically, you had like two months last year that you didn't have to do much.
Well, and then you don't have to plow, so you can concentrate on the office stuff.
Actually, I'm, I'm the final, final, final backup.
Yeah, it's.
Little final, final.
Just like June was saying, right now, one person gets sick. I mean, it's a bad time of year to be down. I got two people off today. One sick, two in the back country, and two for the incident last week.
Well, some of this reinforces the need for that extra.
We're trying to pave.
Some of this really enforces, reinforces the need for that, um, that five percent that we talked about. And you gotta be able to keep these.
But what's the state, what's the state doing for raises?
Seven and a half, seven percent, I think.
Wow.
This year.
They're, they're using a bunch of their carryover funds, because they weren't able to fill positions either, but.
I think they're missing a hundred and thirty people on staff.
But that's out of what, three thousand?
Oh, I think it's.
Probably about a half, right, yeah.
About a bit more.
Thirty, forty thousand.
I think you guys need to have a conversation about adding a couple of people, seeing what that looks like. This is supposed to be, I mean, you know, we're, we're questioning if this will be long-term or not, but I it's supposed to be. That's what the legislation says.
Oh, the one point two?
The one point two.
I think there was that caveat that Commissioner, or, I mean, uh, Kurt Miller mentioned, well, maybe, kind of.
Says intended.
Intended, very.
That's the word.
All funding of the state is intended.
So we consider it soft money now, or do we consider it hard money?
Soft.
Hard.
There you go.
You guys aren't any help.
Who the coin? You picked you to something.
What do you call it, Ed?
Yeah, you're right.
You're the tiebreaker.
Oh, Doug is. He is the one that gives us attraction.
Well.
I mean, I have a hard time unless I actually see something wrote in front of me, whether it's hard money or soft money.
Then legislation, you know, it is intended, and it's supposed to be larger every year.
Well, if legislation passes, then we consider it hard money.
I think, I think what you look at is, uh, get your baseline, and, and all this stuff becomes soft money. You use it as you get it. Get those contracts out, you know, personally.
Yeah. Oh, and the pressure's moved into the pit up there. I think they're gonna start crushing next week.
Um, where are we fixing the East Fork for that fish? Fish wildlife thing? Is that on agenda this year?
Yes.
We gotta get that done, because that's seven hundred grand.
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna get the money coming to us no matter what when that BA's finished, because that is set in stone, and that means I have to fix it. Whether it's this year or next year.
Okay.
It's, the BA will get the money coming.
Just need one more guy in the track hall.
A dump truck and road grader and roller.
Want, not need.
And tomorrow, I gotta go meet the four service-up profile clerk to look at our mitigation for this BA stuff. I'm hoping to tie that in with my, when my crew gets out of Bear Valley, heads up there, I'll have a couple of trucks available. Other trucks and everything else ready to roll, so we can put a couple of culverts in and put the gravel up the road while I got a road grader in there.
Good. You can, Ed?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all.
Yep. We're gonna go on down our agenda, our next item is an action item. This is a discussion decision regarding allocation of National Forest Funds for fiscal year twenty-three. Mr. Miller.
Yeah, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, I, hopefully you had an opportunity to review the material that I submitted or sent out regarding this matter, but apparently this is, uh, the first time in a lot of years that the county has the ability to determine what the distribution of the SRS dollars are going to be. Uh, if I can refer you to the second page of the, the, um, information titled Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Two Forest Service Payment to States. Page two, uh, the second paragraph, three hundred and fifty thousand or greater, if the county share of the state payment is three hundred and fifty thousand or greater, the county must allocate fifteen percent to twenty percent of its share to Title Two and, and Title Three, or a combination of both, except that the allocation for Title Three projects may not exceed seven percent. So you only could increase the amount, uh, to Title Two, which is the money that the Forest Service gets. Or you also have the ability to opt into returning its allocation in whole or part to the federal government. So that is also an option, but now we are required to provide the state with what our allocation is going to be. So what it has been is Title One has received eighty-five percent. Title Two has, uh, received eight percent, and then Title Three has received seven percent. Commissioners, I would recommend that we just remain with that percentage that has been allocated for several years, at least nine years that I've been, uh, the clerk, is that was what the allocation of the money has been. Title One gets eighty-five percent, which is the, um, the county and the schools. Title Two is what is returned, I guess, for lack of better words, to the Forest Service to be used for trail maintenance in what they deem, uh, is appropriate for the use of this money. And then the Title Three, the Commissioners are fully aware of, I also provided you with, uh, I, I don't know if it was this Commissioner meeting or a few Commissioner meetings of the appropriate way that the county can expend the Title Three.
And that, if, I remember you were talking, Sherry's mentioned several times, oh, that's money out there, we seem, anytime we're on National Forest ground, that we, whether it's Sheriff Department or EMS or.
Anything that it is emergency response on Forest Service ground, we should be getting reimbursed.
Right.
And Doug, that is one question, so we just went back and rescued the airplane crash. I was on Forest Service ground. Do you know if the sheriff is documenting that?
I don't know, Commissioner Moplin.
I'm gonna send an email because we also had, what, two or three responses up Warren Wagon this year during snowmobile time, um, for recovery up there. So all of those we should be reimbursing ourselves for. Um, and then, so my question on Title Three remains, and it's in the fact sheet again. The authority to initiate Title Three projects terminates on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any county funds not obligated by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four must be returned to the Treasury.
So I think if it's, if it's kinda like the money from IDPR, we would have to have a budget hearing and at least have a proposal. I don't know if there's gonna be a form of how, how are those funds gonna be used from years to come? Um, we would be using it on fire mitigation, education, we would be using it on search and rescue equipment, uh, law enforcement equipment, fire department equipment that's going to be utilized, uh, or that's going to be solely used in the Forest Service. So we have to have, my interpretation, and we can definitely get legal's advice, but we have some sort of working document that shows how we're going to utilize that remaining dollars if we don't expend them all in one year.
So the six and a thousand, it's already in that fund, or six fifty, or whatever it is, we don't have to show that allocation?
What we have to do this budget year, sorry for interrupting you.
I'm just wondering how we've accumulated so much without identifying where it's going.
Great question. This is brand new, that I'm, I, I am just being made aware of this, and if you recall, I was just made aware of this by our outside auditor. So I don't know if this has been something that's been required over the years, but this was just brought to my attention during our last fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit. And then, um, now we're, we know of what our requirements are. But we will, in our budget hearing that we have, we're also going to have to discuss how we're going to be intending on utilizing SRS dollars, or, or, excuse me, how we're gonna be utilizing Title Three dollars. Or we did, we do what we did with the, um, the Fire Department for Cascade Rule Fire Department is, if we receive requests, we have a separate public hearing, uh, and we publish that and we, um, let the general public know that we have a request to use these Title Three monies, is there, this is your opportunity to come and present to the Commissioners regarding the expenditure of those funds. So if we have a budget workshop, uh, well, during our budget, our budget public hearing, we have to, I guess, generally describe how we're gonna spend those Title Three dollars. If we get an unanticipated request, from my reading, we would have to have a special public hearing, like we did for the Cascade Rule Fire Department.
So one of the things that Title Three can be used for specifically calls out broadband. And also.
Yeah, they did mention that, didn't they?
And also providing chippers to treat hazardous vegetation within the home ignition zone. Um, I mean, I guess what I'm asking is how are we gonna look at this as a whole and figure out what we can and cannot do with it? Because there is a lot of things that can be done, and I, I don't think anyone's taken this and really identified it, you know, said, hey, your department needs to look at this as far as funding mechanisms. Um, because if there's chippers, I mean, we are, we are bringing all that stuff to the, those, uh, bins and then going and dumping it. If there's chippers that can be purchased in order to do that.
Have to come from the federal, from the Forest Service land?
It says to treat hazardous vegetation with a home ignition zone, and that's part of the, that's why I was excited about the firewise communities, because as part of that CWP plan, there needs to be a home ignition zone. And that can, i- if that plan is done correctly, then it can be an identification of.
They've already done that. You define the home ignition zone, and then there's another zone bigger than that. But if we could use that to buy the chipper for the MRF, that would be.
And that's, I'm looking at this going, you know, I, I think that that's a possibility.
Yeah.
Um, you can actually provide grants, partial funding for removal of vegetation, which is what those five hundred dollar grants are. You can also salary and transportation for youth crews removing vegetation from around homes, you can go pay somebody to go do it. So, but it's very specific. They have to be firewise communities, so we need to engage with the other cities and try and get them to be firewise communities also. But I mean, the worst case scenario is, it is, it says specifically that this is to create broadband into the, um, it doesn't even say into the forest area.
I would have some reservations, expending Title Three money for that, but that's just my own personal opinion.
Yeah, I think I would choose, sure, we gotta be really careful, but I'd like, I like your thought about, we need to figure out ways to spend it. Scott was talking to me this morning about buying a chipper for the MRF site. Chippering of wady debris, not the construction, but the wady debris, and either selling it or just spreading it back out. Whether they do it or we buy it, if we have, can use Title Three funds to do that, then I think we should. But in the past, we've been notified that you can't spend Title Three on a lot of things.
But I, I think we need further clarity on that.
Yeah.
Um, because there's, there's a lot of things that specifically calls out that you can use it for. And Doug, where would be your hesitation? Cause it specifically calls out broadband.
Truthfully, how much, it, what impact is it gonna have using twenty thousand dollars to? Where would you expend the money? What type of program for broadband would you expend it on? And are there other better suited expenditures that could be made out of Title Three?
And I agree with that. There's just a lot of money sitting there.
I, I, and I would disagree, I mean, there's a lot, but what is our remaining cash in there right now? Four hundred and?
I really wanna see us, us come up with.
So there's only four hundred and three thousand left in that. So we know that we're going to be getting requests from Cascade Rule Fire, what you've allocated up to forty-five thousand, right? Uh, so that takes us down to three sixty, um, our fire mitigation program that we pay. I think we have the education program, I can look, but it's, I, I don't know specifically, um, the amount of money that comes out for that, but that's probably thirty thousand a year.
But we just put a hundred and forty in there because you just received it.
And that's, we're only at four oh three.
With a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're, right now, as of July twenty-eighth, I ran this on Wednesday, we're at four hundred and three thousand. So I mean, yeah, it's a lot, but it's, the way that I'm hearing it be discussed, I see it dwindling quickly.
Yeah.
I hope we use it each year. That's what I'm hoping.
But do we want, a- agreed, we, we, I am not disagreeing with, we should be at least aware of how we can expend it and better utilize the funding that we get in each year from Title Three. I'm a one hundred percent agree.
If we can use it for some of the firewise stuff, can we use it for this other person that Stephanie's been talking about? She wants to replace her to do the field work, the dirt work part of this.
The grants should be paying for that.
I don't see that here. It's salary or wages of emergency response personnel deployed during an emergency response. Replacement of any equipment during that response. Um, but there's also a line item in there for training personnel to respond to emergencies, and there's a huge need right now, uh, for search and rescue, to have a bunch of training to go back and respond to those emergencies. So, you know, that should be something that we're really highlighting with Sheriff.
That's gonna, that's a great, uh, idea to use it for that. However, I'm gonna go on record saying I think we need some different leadership in there for that to happen.
I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Doug, um, on the force funds, it's an action item. Do you need a motion from us stating what percentage goes in each one?
Yes. Um, if you don't wanna make a decision today, we have to have this done by September fifteenth.
I'm willing to go ahead and move today, but I forgot the percentages.
So Title One would be my, would be eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent.
Title Two would be eight percent, and then Title Three would be seven percent. And I have the form, if the Commissioner could.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allocate the, um, Title Three funds to eighty-five percent Title One, eight percent Title Two, and seven percent Title Three.
And I'm, I'll second that.
Move to second. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I think you make a good point on trying to figure out, though, how, how we can get some, get that used, you know, use it properly and get it, make, we've got to use it.
Yeah, yeah. And the money's there to be allocated.
I was thinking about, just like this grinder thing, may cost more than the three, four hundred thousand available, but we can make it.
You want me to sign this, Doug, or you?
Uh, you, so if you wouldn't mind, I'll attest it, though.
You know, I mean, and start getting it used, use it for what it's supposed to be used.
Even talks about supporting nine one one emergency, but you can't use it specifically to set up a nine one one emergency system.
What's our bucks thirteen fifty?
That is a lot of things you can use it for, it looks like. Well, it's titled, uh, County Projects.
And what's your phone number? Seventy-one hundred, seventy-one oh two?
Seventy-one oh two.
Okay, we're gonna go on down to our next agenda item, which is an action item. This is a decision on closing McCall Department of Motor Vehicles. June and Megan, come on up. Um, I guess I can kinda start the conversation after looking at the information that Megan has given us last week and the trend of where we're going, I think it is time to pull up our chairs and move back home.
That is home, El. I'm from McCall, remember? That's my home.
I understand that, but, um.
We have, Valley County is our home. We have to represent everyone.
And if I may speak?
Sure, absolutely.
I know that this is a decision that is made by the assessor, but I did not wanna do this without your blessing, because this is a very difficult and serious decision to make, but you are correct. The writing is on the wall. DMV is, um, not going to be covering itself fiscally anymore. ITD has taken more and more from us, and Meg can explain that if, if may be. You brought up a tricky point. The biggest complaint that I've had with the McCall DMV is the inconsistency. Being down to one person, if that employee should get sick, I have nobody to cover it. I have to close it. We have been back and forth on appointments and walk-in. That's inconsistent. People are trying to schedule an appointment only to find out it's booked up in full, or they think they can just come and visit and it's appointments only, and they're turned away. Our inconsistency has caused a lot of people to be very upset and angry. Moving the DMV down here, we would bring that employee down here. She would continue to be employed with the county. Definitely, definitely use her skills and her knowledge down here. And I feel bad to inconvenience the taxpayers, property owners, citizens of McCall, but we have to look at what's fiscally responsible to. Doing this would cut the DMV budget by about a little over forty-eight thousand a year, would save the county a little over fifty thousand a year to be used, um, someplace else. So my proposal is to keep it open through September, as is in McCall. Appointments only, we are paid through October with our rent, but our new contract does start October first. Anna has assured me the bank will work with us any way that they can help us. That would give us the month of October to get everything moved out, and we're still paid for that month of rent. That is my proposal, and if you have questions regarding more detail, Meg here can answer anything and everything that you may need.
Uh, June, is that counter and all that stuff ours?
Yes, it is. Mr. D built that. It does come apart. It is in sections. And I'm sure that counter could be used.